I can't open that thing you sent me.
I have to have you come down at the office.
That'll do that. I'll be happy to.
Right, it is six oh three, so I will call to order the September twenty eighth, twenty twenty three meeting of the Lake Conservancy District Board of Directors. We do have a forum with Mike Bywell, Malcolm McLeod, Steve Pretty and myself present. All other members are absent. So we do have a forum by the skin of our teeth. We will begin with public comments. I will note that if you wish to speak regarding the two thousand and twenty four proposed budget, we would ask you to hold off on those discussions until we actually have the public hearing, because there will be an opportunity to speak during the public hearing. If it's not related to the budget, you are welcome to come to the podium. We do ask that you please keep your comments to three minutes or less and state your name and if you know your district which or sub area, which sub area you live in. Thank you.
Surragiel Tala in just five across the street from the Ford Hall. There's several houses there. So last night I was at, I've been an environmental activist since nineteen sixty nine. I do lots of lots of environmental work and last night I was at, it's called Green Drinks. It's a, it's a free gathering at Upland Brewery and they give you free food and every month they have an environmental, I think this, I think the city started it or the city sponsored, environmental speaker. So last night it was from the Resiliency Institute and he mentioned there's all these grants for solar and, and where our state is forty ninth in taking grants, so we have almost, we haven't taken any. And there's one called the Rural Energy for America Program, R A, R E A P. And it's for, and he's saying, somebody come take this. Not one person has taken it. It's for farmers or businesses in rural areas to get a grant to get solar. So I went up and said, hey, we're Conservancy District, we're like an HOA. Can we get grants, you know, for our office and our, our, you know, Riddle Point? And he said, that's, that's, I'm not sure. So I wanted to come and tell you all about this and get permission to meet with this guy. It's the Resilience Institute at IU and this man was the head of it and spoke so friendly and openly. So I want to get permission from the board to contact him to pursue if we get a grant for free or almost free solar panels for the office. And you don't have to have a south facing roof, you know, you can put them on the ground. And that would also be, I put solar panels on two of my houses, one facing south. You could see it, try and encourage, it's such a great place to have, everybody on North Shore should have, North Shore shoreline should have solar panels. So anyway, I'd like the law to go on whether I should go ahead and pursue seeing if we can get free solar panels.
Any thoughts from the board or any questions?
I've got a comment on that. So solar panels produce DC, like fifty six volts DC. And so in order to drive power back up the line, if that's the point, then you need an inverter. I don't know if that's included with this. If you're trying to power things at night, you're gonna need a battery backup, you know, there's lots of other pieces that go into it.
No, I, I've installed them myself. I, I worked with a group of people installing them. That's how we, I got them. So I know about the inverter. I don't have a backup battery.
You do have an inverter though.
Oh yeah. You have to have an inverter to send it back. These are solar panels should be going back to the system. So during the daytime, you're feeding the system at night. Unfortunately, R A M C is bad company because they hardly count. Whatever, whatever you give them, they, they don't give you much credit. They sell it back to you for three times as much as you, whatever. But anyway, but it's still, it's still a good thing for the earth, a good thing for the environment. I partly buy them to offset all my airline travel. So it's like, I fly an airplane, I buy solar panels to kind of offset what I'm doing. So anyway. I know, I'm sure the whole system is included and I'm not sure if it's a hundred percent grant, fifty percent or whatever. It sounded like it was a hundred percent.
Definitely, I think it would be required in pursuit if we can do it for eligible for, for them to provide. While we're looking into it.
What, what I'd make sure that you clarify with them in the discussions is that we're actually a political subdivision. So we're a unit of government. So sometimes those grants.
Yeah, that, that might throw us.
Yeah, but so, but I mean, it doesn't sound like there's objection in getting more information.
Real point of business, Amy? So real point is the Conservancy and the government.
Yeah, yeah.
That might hurt, but I'm, I'm gonna try. And I did, Jessica sent me the flyer. She made a flyer about all the plans we should have around our properties and it was really a nice flyer. I put it in little points. I thought that she answered it, but it was good luck.
Any other members of the public wishing to make comments tonight? Again, we'll have a public hearing for the proposed budget, so, but if it's not budget related, any additional comments?
Anybody else feel say anything? Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, if, if you want to say anything that's not budget related.
Not budget related?
Correct. Because there's a, there's a specific section in the meeting for, for those comments. So it's not that you can't give comments, it's that there's a, a public hearing for that. All right, we'll move on to approval of the August twenty fourth, twenty twenty three board minutes. I will entertain a motion. Second, is there any discussion? Seems none, although it's in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion opposed, I should say. Uh, next item is capital campaign survey results. Kristy Howard Schultz.
Yes, I'd like to invite Kristy Howard Schultz up to the podium and working with Kristy on the capital campaign. She was behind the survey and helping to guide us as we go forward.
Thank you all. I'm Kristy. As they said, Steve and I met about a year ago through Megan at the Community Foundation of Monroe County. I have my own consultancy. I've been in philanthropy for about the last twenty five years-ish and also work for the School for Philanthropy. Tonight, our agenda is to explore the survey findings and observations. We'll have time for questions. We'll talk about recommendations and next steps and then housekeeping. So I hope that many of you took the survey. Some successes to celebrate are that we had three hundred and forty seven total responses, which is a seventy two percent increase in responses from our last survey that was done in two thousand and twenty. The infographic, if you noticed or followed Jess's other good work that the previous presenter mentioned, the infographic in the Facebook campaign for storytelling really increased engagement. There was a call to action with each of those items every time to participate in the survey. And then also the gatehouse staff passed out the infographic with a QR code. So in addition to that, some things to celebrate include that twenty eight individuals from the survey expressed interest in additional information on facility naming rights, sponsorship opportunities and ways to make gifts. And then lastly, we, we collected forty eight brand new email addresses, which is a six percent increase to our overall distribution list. So why does this increased engagement matter? If you were here during our October meeting last year, one of the things that we talked about in exploring the feasibility of a capital campaign is that we measure not only capacity but engagement. And the greatest indicator of whether or not someone will give is related to that intersection there, where engagement is the most important part. So we know that we need to increase, oops, the revenue for the Conservancy District, but how? So that's part of what the survey measured. So of those that responded, eighty percent were, were free holders. And then just under twenty percent were regular visitors, people like me and my family who come to recreate at the lake but don't own a home there. And then you can see the age breakout here as well. Something important to note, and Jess and the staff have already been on this. Of those that responded to the survey, nearly thirty percent of people did not know the district that they lived in. So we have an opportunity to educate the residents on their district and how to be involved. Of those that took the survey, thirty seven percent of people were here year round, then year round on weekends, then seasonally and then through the summer. We got a pretty good distribution though, I would say, from people in every single district, which was, was good. So I would support making an increase to the Conservancy portion of the county tax permanent. Almost, so fifty nine percent of people support a permanent increase to that portion of the county tax. At the same time, seventy two percent of people think that more dredging is needed, but they want us to find other ways outside of taxes to do that. And so we had people rank, prioritize them. So grant funding was the number one priority, hosting non-boating events and then facility rentals. These are the freeholder answers and then I'll go over the recreational visitor answers. Um, I want to have Adam and Ross have an opportunity to talk a tiny bit about this slide. I wanted to share them side by side. We asked everyone how managing the lake should be primarily funded. Our freeholder said that current use fees and gatehouse fees, so all of our boating fees, our gatehouse fees, things like that should primarily be the way the lake is funded. And then, so that's what you see in the big chart on the left. On the right hand side, Adam, if you would want to give just a comment, this is the actual revenue breakdown. So what we want versus what it is.
Yeah, I pulled the numbers together just so I could see kind of how we're actually funding, because there's always discussion between fees and taxes and what that looked like compared to how people thought the Conservancy could be funded. So the top right circle there was actually revenue from two thousand and twenty two, two thousand and twenty one and two thousand and nineteen. I didn't include two thousand and twenty because it's very skewed with the bond. So I was trying to get an average baseline. And actually, when we were in those areas, it is really approaching that, you know, just under fifty percent from the taxes and then a little over fifty percent from the fees and other. So we were very close to that kind of projected revenue distribution that we'd like to see from the survey. The next one down is from twenty three and twenty four projected, and that's when we added that four hundred and twenty five thousand dollar additional assessment for the hydraulic project. So that's when I really kind of jumped that up to about seventy three percent of our total funding coming from the taxes versus the fees and charges. So pre that addition, we were kind of about that fifty fifty between fees and taxes. Now we are sitting at about seventy five, twenty five percent.
And then do you agree that the Conservancy District is doing enough to combat the effects of sedimentation in the lake? Fifty percent, fifty eight percent of people do somewhat strongly agree that we are doing enough to mitigate sedimentation. And then how often do you visit Riddle Point? Of the freeholders, more than seventy five percent of people visit Riddle Point zero to one times a year. So for those that live on the lake, Riddle Point is not a popular destination. However, we still invited people to rank what recreation additions. We're gonna talk about improvements next, but these are additions, what additions they would like to see to the park. And in ranked priority, they were the accessible walking path, pickleball, the most popular sport in America right now, and then additional volleyball courts, and it sort of went down from there. As far as capital improvements, so improvements to existing facilities and features on Riddle Point, the most important priority for freeholders was adding a dock near the beach and then after that was updating the restroom. Now we're moving on to those who do not live on the lake but visit for recreation purposes. The biggest responses from this group came from new people who are excited and new at the lake and then, not surprisingly, people who are faithful visitors and have been coming for over twenty years. Of those that responded to the survey that were recreational visitors, they visit often, five times or more each year. So no surprises really there. Of the recreational partners, we asked if they would support a, an increase to the park entry fee. And if you look at this slide, you might think, wah wah, like they were very indifferent. People were evenly split as to whether or not that they would support an increase to the fee. So I think we have recommendations at the end, but you could potentially experiment with raising the fee based on this feedback. Same, almost the same thing regarding boating fees. Boating fees should be used to help fund additions and improvements to the park. And how would the boating fees, if we increase them, change your behavior? Not, not a lot of strong opinions here on this question. Of our recreational partners and visitors, how often do you visit the beach? Obviously, those folks are visiting the beach more often. What would they rank? The good news is your top two of the top three from both recreational visitors and residents are the same. So they also want accessible walking paths and volleyball courts. Now this is all respondents put together. When you put everybody together, the ranking, it's overwhelmingly accessible walking, then pickleball, then volleyball courts. That's because more residents responded to the survey than non-residents. What types of capital improvements would recreational visitors like to have? They prioritize the bathroom first and then widening the existic, the existing boat launch and then sort of down from there. So restroom is still in the top two for both groups. And if you rank the two groups together, again, more freeholders responded than recreational visitors, but the ranking is the restroom still is the first and then adding a dock area to Riddle Point Beach is the second. So overall fundraising priorities, we asked everyone, what would you be more likely to financially support, regardless of if you're a recreational visitor or a resident? And overwhelmingly, people would support a dedicated fund for dredging. After that, they would support establishing an endowment for the Conservancy District as a whole. And then third would be Riddle Point Park improvements. So our recommendations would be to budget for and hire a fractional staff member to pursue grant funding as indicated in the two thousand and twenty Riddle Point Park Master Plan. So in that plan, which you probably don't have memorized and you shouldn't, they sort of listed out in the items what they thought grant funding was available for. And as a fundraiser, I agree with the findings of that report. So you could pursue that. You could consider developing up to three designated funds within the community foundations. One dedicated to dredging, one dedicated to an endowment to draw revenue off of year after year, and then a third potentially to dedicate to all non-dredging lake maintenance for people who have that as their priority for giving. I would also strongly recommend to capitalize on the success and reach out to all twenty eight people interested in naming opportunities and giving. And then upon those findings, to create giving levels accordingly. In addition to that, to create gift agreements and acceptance policies for those that are interested in giving and then budget for higher part-time fractional fundraiser or person to help execute all of those activities, gift agreements and things like that. I would also recommend conducting a professional education slash public relations campaign to help freeholders understand what happens with and without tax increases, which I know the Conservancy District staff have worked very, very hard on that and made a ton of progress. And then consider experimenting with incremental gatehouse and use fee increases. Our next steps are to develop action items based on the survey findings. We want to be sure that we send thank yous and follow up with a timeline of what we plan to do with our results to all survey participants and then celebrate the increases in engagement and share our plans for the future, especially with the Community Foundation, because they're helping us with all of this and will be instrumental in what happens next. And then for housekeeping, our engagement together as a group, we have two sessions remaining after this evening. And I would advise that you use the first one to sort of outline a plan and invitations, questions and sort of guidance for the visits to those twenty eight individuals. And then use the second to help train the staff and committee or board members, anyone that is willing to conduct the visits. And then just know that an extension of our engagement is possible at any time and that there's other fundraisers too that you could, that you could work with that could help kind of explore what's next. And then that's the end of the information that I have to present. There were several open-ended questions in the survey, which we have compiled, but there were no trends. They were, all the answers were different, no emerging trends from those answers. But for anybody that wants to see them, we do have them. And then I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Kristy?
You must be available to us.
Yes, we'll make sure that a PDF gets to the board.
Do you think the Community Foundation would have some influence like the gift acceptance policies and that kind of stuff?
Yes, they could help advise us on all of that stuff. Yeah, yeah.
And that would be in the second meeting that we've got coming up, if you could help with that.
Yeah, we both, me, myself and or Megan, yeah, we could definitely help with that. Yeah.
That would be the, the next step.
Yeah, and I definitely like the idea of utilizing Kristy to help develop like the, like questionnaires and the guided meetings I would have with those potential donors. Isn't that expertise, so?
Yeah, I agree with that. I assume you have no expertise in grant writing.
I do, and yes, I do actually, but yeah. And particularly with capital improvements.
Okay, are all capital improvement grants the same or is this special because it has to do with maintenance of a lake as opposed to building a school or something else?
Um, well, Michael kind of indicated this earlier, because grants is a hot topic tonight, but they all have different parameters and what the Riddle Point Park Master Plan study really indicated is things that would be, things that would be great for grant funding would include things like accessibility, public facing improvements at the park related to health, wellness, children, families, placemaking, things like that, native plant, native planting, climate rehabilitation. These are all things for which we could get grant funding. It would be harder to get grant funding for some of the more maintenance things and the government status. We would just have to pay careful attention to things like that.
Health wellness would get us a new bathhouse.
I don't disagree. Whether the grant people agree, I don't know, but all they need to do is visit it once, so.
They just want to see our, you know, they want to see our budget, they want to see our plan, they want to see our money. And then they make a determination on that. I mean, I've wrote them for the fire department for years and, and I, I agree with Adam, there, there, there's, there really is no money out there because we, we used it all up in oh six when we, when we bought the small barge. Now whether or not it's going to resurface or not, I don't know. I think our best bet, whether you agree or not, is through the legislature, you know. And we don't have a, that big enough voter base on the lake to successfully get, get a legislature to.
To lobby the legislature.
Yeah, so, yeah, are you a lobbyist?
I am not a lobbyist, no, no, emphatically no, no.
But one of the things with regard to legislation is if there's other Conservancy districts that are having similar challenges.
Absolutely.
You know, we can collaborate and maybe us alone don't have the, the oomph to get it across, but a number of Conservancy districts.
Excellent point.
Or, or even communities that, that aren't a Conservancy district that manage a lake that would be in the same grant pool.
And that would be with the Lake Society, right? Yeah, I mean, so the New Lake Society, Management Society does do some lobbying. One of the big ones has been pushing for them to reevaluate the Lake and River Enhancement, which was the grants that we used initially to purchase the barges back in two thousand and nine. Seems like most of the reservoirs that have applied for those have maxed out and they're kind of all in the southern half of the state where the reservoirs exist. So there has been talk about restructuring that and opening it back up and we're paying very close attention to that if those become available.
So did I see correctly, it looks like there is not a really strong opposition to the fact that we increase taxes.
It doesn't seem that there's a strong opposition to the.
I'm not for, for.
Yeah, I know, and I know that it does not appear that there's a strong opposition to the, to the current increase in taxes. And it also does not appear that there would be a strong opposition to incrementally increasing the fees for the use fees, the gatehouse, things like that. There did not appear to be a strong opposition to either one of those in our results.
Second, I want to make sure the board has their questions answered first.
Well, I just, so fourteen percent of District Seven responded and that's, that's the largest district.
Yeah.
I don't have my calculator with me, so I have, I don't.
Let me go back to that slide. There we go.
And, and my point being, and then he's got the second largest district and I don't recall District Six is green, so you know, like ten point eight. So you got almost twenty five percent of, of the two largest districts that responded. And so, you know, I'm wondering, obviously, our concern is the sediment comes into our two districts, okay? Now, with your experiences, that skewed the report a little bit?
Well, so Adam had us dig in further to that question where we, we broke down the answers and it, it didn't seem like it's, it skewed it.
It really didn't and that's kind of one of the things that I'm gonna call a success over the past handful of years. I would say prior boards and before, there was kind of like a big eastern, western, different views. But I think these results really kind of showing kind of a, a one lake vision and people are realizing that we're not all on board with helping and it impacts everybody. I would say that it reinforces that, so I did not think it was very skewed with what people were saying.
It's, it's been a while since I've looked at the distribution of assessed valuation within the lake, but it seems like they're not, compared to the district sizes and stuff like that, they seem like the, the pers. The, the, the distribution from, of responses seems not too far off from, from probably where people.
Oh, I'm surprised at the, at the dredging from, from the lake, from the whole lake overall.
Yeah. I think, I think one thing that has helped, which is not helping the lake, but helped us as far as understanding the importance of dredging is the fact that it is so visible in the eastern end, when you're out there. Areas that you used to, you know, not that long ago be able to go into were considerably less votable. So I think people are really starting to understand on my end of the lake that this is an issue that isn't just, you know, impacting District Six and Seven, but impact, excuse me. Yeah, that's right, Six and Seven. It's impacting the entire planet.
Well, I think the, taking into consideration what we're certainly, we should, somewhat, not concerned about the tax increase. The board responsibility is, well, you know, said that so far and we spend time, effort and mother pursuing, uh, pursuing another way, which is through donations. So we as a board think that it's, we have time and will the board cooperate considering their own areas? Will they cooperate in using the same raisin techniques or are we, say, you know, too much time, too much money, we don't get involved, let's just raise taxes. That's our question.
It's just what?
Raise taxes.
So, so I think what's, to interpret and tell me if I misinterpreted this, I, I think is there, there's gonna take a commitment if we want to go after, especially donations and sponsorships. It's gonna take an effort and there needs to be a buy-in from, from the board to, to participate in that effort, to afford to have a chance of success.
I think that other people we've had, we've talked with the board, fundraising has to be a board-supported activity to make it successful.
Yes, yeah, absolutely. If we pursued philanthropic revenue and we did visits and we asked for individual gifts, absolutely the board would have to develop, devote the time to the training and to doing the visits and the follow-ups and things like that and everybody would need to participate, yeah.
So.
For it to be successful.
When you and I first met, Michael, myself and Adam, five or six years ago, met a lady on the northwest side, right? And I think Debbie set this up.
Oh, Angela White.
Angela White, yeah.
Yeah.
Johnson Gross.
So.
I don't think I was in that.
I said you were.
No, I don't think I was.
Oh, I'm sorry, Adam and I.
Yeah, the Johnson Gross.
Okay, and we're last, we're last in giving. Churches, schools.
Environment, yeah, yeah.
And so, you know, and I've, I've brought this up before to the chair of the, of this committee. And, you know, why wouldn't we hook up with the Boys and Girls Club? And, and get, I mean, now you're talking about the Pacers, the Colts, Eli Lilly. I mean, now you're, you're reaching outside of, you know, our Bailey wig, you know, what they, whatever they call it. And, and, and now we're getting some money coming in and we team up with the Boys and Girls Club. Can you help us with that?
Well, we talked quite a lot about this in the committee and I, I don't want to go too far, but I think where there are opportunities for grant funding, it definitely, and that's one of the reasons in the infographic, we wanted to highlight the partnerships, like with the Rowing Club, with the Boys and Girls Club, with Camp Rock, with, that's how I learned about the lake twenty five years ago, is I worked for the Boys and Girls Club and that's how I came to the lake. We could find money, but it would be related to programs more like, and you know all about, yeah, more likely about programs than about the, like, sedimentation itself.
Yeah, I think like the capital improvements for the park and stuff as well.
Absolutely.
Walking, all that, since Boys and Girls Club utilized that, Boy Scouts utilized that. And we have been in more communication with the Boys and Girls Club. We reached out with them with the last lemon drop that we did. And we have been in more communication with the Boys and Girls Club, uh, we reached out with them with the last, uh, Lemon Drop that we did. And like, so we're starting to try to break that down to their Blue Door Society not too long ago, where Lake Lemon, um, got an award for kind of being one of their stewards and donors and letting them use the property. I think we are having some more communication there, um, and I definitely think it's worth exploring more, but I think definitely the park side, which would go into the program.
And, and Mike, I think to your point and what Christie is sort of validating is that these types of partnerships, how, a, a lot of granters, when they see those partnerships, you know, it, it makes it more enticing because they see they're not only benefiting Lake Lemon Conservancy District, but they're benefiting the Boys and Girls Club and X, Y, Z, uh, so that they're getting more bang for their buck in their perception, so.
How much, it comes right down to, how much more does that click in our pocket?
That, that, and that's what we have to look at. So if, if, if we can leverage them for, you know, programs or capital improvements that are in the park that benefit them, like an improved restroom so that if they're bringing the campers to the main part of the park or to the beach, that they're going into a nicer facility, that obviously is a great advantage. I mean, that benefits the conservancy district and, and our visitors that are paying those user fees to use the park. Um, if it's going solely for one of their programs, now not so much, so.
Also in the survey, I think that the freeholders said, you said the revenue was going to pull up.
So they did, and I, Stephen, you're, I took, I put an observation and I took it out because it's a little, um, the freeholders don't really use the park and kind of what they indicated is, we don't really use the park, we don't really want to have improvements at the park. However, if you want to increase gatehouse fees and use fees, you probably need to make improvements to the park. You know, based on the other feedback from the recreational users, so.
For the park to be a revenue driver, it's got to be nice enough that people want to go.
Yeah, you're going to have, I mean, it's, it's a tough question. The, the point is, I'm trying to say is, do we forget all that and just stick with the taxes?
Yeah.
Because we will have to give time, energy.
Right.
And the lead for people and that is the dedication to what they will program that the community recommends or will. Well, I don't know, I'm kind of torn on that, so I'm trying to get a.
Matt, Mike, I was just going to point out that I thought one of the major things that the residents wanted was a dock at the Little Point, wasn't it?
It was.
Yes, yes.
That's part of why they don't go there.
Because there isn't a way to access the beach.
Because I'm sure, I, I think.
The survey we did on the park improvement plan, eleven people out of twenty, on the last page of the survey, said mooring at the beach.
Yep. Forty-four percent of everybody said they wanted the dock.
Grandkids or kids, they need to use the bathroom, or would they want to play in the sand? So, I think it would get used by residents, I think.
That's why I'm excited too for meeting with the people and kind of these guided questionnaires and meetups. I do think the stuff at Riddle Point Park is very ripe for naming opportunities, whether it be the docks, whether it be, uh, we think any good pavilion, whether potentially the bath house, definitely the accessible walking way. Um, so I definitely think there's.
There's no way, I researched the composite, uh, that you're going to use on the dock. If you use composite, uh, there's just, just no way to, to engrave a name on the composite. Uh, because it, it, it's, it's into the, yeah, well, it, now you're, now you're, you know, getting into, into what makes the composite and so it, it'll, it'll tear up. Uh, you could put a sign up and it could be, you know, the maximum water dock, you know, which I, yeah, second.
Thank you.
Uh, but, uh, yeah, uh, uh, unless you go a different way, you know, on how you're going to build the dock or whatever, but, uh.
So I think it's a big benefit is learning that people are willing to give the dredging or other stuff that they can visually see and utilize on a daily basis. I, I think we'll explore that in this meeting.
Steve, to, to your conversation too, I think if it's feasible and you're going to allow it within.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Is that, uh, we give a little bit of thought as to what our realistic potential is on the.
How much?
So that, that we can make that informed decision is, is it, is it truly viable and is it truly viable? So I'm not saying that it isn't.
Well, we did get twenty-eight people say, you know, more than giving it, they want to get a hundred dollars or they want to get a hundred thousand.
Right.
And I don't know how to get that information.
Right. I, I think it's having the conversations for those individuals.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think, and, and if the board doesn't have any objections, I, I don't mind opening because this, I think, is an important discussion. I don't mind opening it if there's some questions from the public. But before I do that, uh, I think the next step is the next meeting is, is working on, let's do, do the poll, find the data and meet with Christie and continue that discussion.
I think we would go with the Capital Campaign Committee.
Yeah, we'd have you yourself.
Yeah.
Yeah, you.
That was my question.
Uh, any other questions from the board? Uh, Yale, you.
So I'm going to say, last summer I was there once a week. Of course, I live on, I only live a mile from it and my grandkids live right there. I have four grandkids that live right there too. But one of the points I want to make is that my experience, especially last summer being at the lake, is a lot of low-income people come to the lake and it's really good because they spread the word. And, um, I've found with several low-income families that I know, that they get into different places at a discount if they have SNAP, they have their SNAP card. So if you raise the gate fee, I don't want to raise it so much that they couldn't get in, but you could raise it, but have, say, discount for SNAP. So, so what it is this year, it's ten dollars. So if they have a SNAP card, they pay ten dollars and we raise it to twelve or thirteen every month. But I just want to put something in there for the lower income people who would stop coming if the gate was raised. But we keep coming if you come with a discount and the SNAP card is such a great way, Wander Lab does it, lots of places around town do it. Um, you get a discount from the SNAP, that, that signifies you're lower income.
Any other questions from the public or?
So you mentioned the breakout on the, um, the campaign or whatever, if you split it into different, does that, do they have to become a restricted donation or can it still be moved from?
So, um, so in the, so the, number one, the community foundation definitely could help advise us on precisely how to set up the funds, but that's where the gift agreements would like come into play also. But when you, are you talking about dredging, endowment and?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, in this model, which is theoretical at this point, um, dredging and endowment would be restricted funds, like you would know that they were going to that and then that all non-dredging lake maintenance, that would be like the general fund, the annual fund, the unrestricted fund, you hear it called lots of different things. But, um, in that case, that would be up to the discretion solely of the staff and board so that it could be used for anything that's needed.
But as it stands now, the money that's donated to the community foundation could be used for any of course.
Pretty open, the way that we wrote our case study in the statement was essentially for the benefit and enhancement of the conservancy district. So it's pretty, pretty fluid.
Right, so in the charity on the bottom, but there's a, it's a tricky thing having restricted funds because it forbids you from using it for another thing that might be more needed at that time, whatever. Whereas if it's unrestricted, you have a whole lot more flexibility.
Right, and that is where the community foundation though, there are, and Michael probably has experience with this too. There, there are lots of ways to say, like, if this amount of people's, you know, if the fund becomes defunct, like, let's say imaginarily the climate changes, we never need dredging again, you know, which you couldn't anticipate. Um, there, there are ways that the community foundation could help us set up, um, uh, I, I can't think of the word I'm looking for, but like where you would vote to unrestrict the money.
You have to go back to the original donor and request that.
But the community foundation could help us, yes, set all of that up, yeah. But you are right, it, as it stands right now, it's much more flexible and, and.
The way it stands now, how is, how is the money being allocated? Since before, now we have the dredging, but do you know how the money was spent and how much?
So the only money that we've spent out of there was last year when we took out that forty thousand dollars to kind of offset our budget when we planned to utilize that for the dredging part, like, besides that, we have not spent any money.
I think that, just somehow operationally, you kind of lose out.
Yeah, and there has been interest in the past, the people we've talked to about the multiple funds and why it would restrict certain uses of the funds if somebody's more likely to give to a dedicated fund and nice to capture that stream and it's easy to set up multiple funds within the community foundation.
One, one of the things that I think we would look at are gift agreements is to, to provide that flexibility if circumstances change is that it, in the agreement, it gives the ability to, to reallocate it if certain conditions are met. So it's not forever stuck in a thing if it's no longer viable. So I think we'd want to consider that strongly if we go that route.
One of the things people wanted was an endowment. Um, is that different than the community funds?
Yes.
Well, I essentially think it is, but, so what would you do with the endowment? Put it in a community fund or something, which.
I, I think you set up however you want to, but if you create an endowment fund that made us a dredging, dredging project, ten million dollars in there and then the money that is generated in the base from the dredging, so we can find the grants, it's going to be ten million dollars.
Then you draw four percent every year and no more taxes.
The biggest difference is currently we have access to one hundred percent of the principal banks, whereas definitely you did get down off the interest.
But then would we have to go find somebody that does endowments or?
Well, the community foundation, the community foundation would be able to help us with that too, yeah.
But it locks the money up to, because you know, it's usually.
Any other questions?
Christie, thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Our committee will work on this next time this committee's. Yep.
Yeah, I'll send out, yeah, I'll send out a request for that, yeah.
If we can, this is, we should hope.
Okay, that'd be great, yep.
I agree.
Yeah.
Especially as you dig into the options, I, I.
Okay. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
So next on the agenda, it's the Treasurers Report, uh, with Debbie Efton today. I'll ask Adam to fill in.
All right. First up, we'll go through the August budget highlights. In August, we brought in thirty-five thousand dollars, five hundred and seventy-nine. Our total expenses were two hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and sixty-five. Of the significant revenue, um, a lot of that was the slips fee, slip fees for the Marina Clubs, which would be the Marina and the Bloomington Yacht Club, eleven thousand, eight hundred and fifty. Um, the other big revenue generator was the park, which was ten thousand, two hundred and sixty. When we look at the expenses, they totaled two hundred and thirty thousand and change. Of those, a hundred and sixty-nine thousand was for the dredging payments. And then seventeen thousand of that was actually for the bath house roof replacement and then for an electrical replacement at the gatehouse from the store that we had, and then we had a truck run into the cable. Um, for the roof replacement, we've already received the funding from the insurance. So we did get an insurance claim for that, they gave us the cash for that, so that's kind of a, a net zero. Actually, they gave us close to two thousand more than it actually costed for the roof replacement. For the bath house, um, that, I think it's like twelve hundred dollars. We're working with the insurance agency, um, from the company that hit it to recoup those funds. So we should be able to recoup those funds as well. Besides that, eleven thousand dollars was for the Lotus Treatment, um, the rest of that was primarily payroll and then an insurance payment in there for six thousand dollars. We did have, we went back and actually broke out, if we look at our profit and loss budget versus actual in the packet, it has all of our percentages for our budgeted income and expenses and where we're at on those and then compared to the full budget. We actually went back and broke out the wakeboard fees, which is four zero one five, the income number, as has been requested. So we've actually brought in almost fifty-five hundred dollars in the wakeboard fees and we did separate that out as well. Any questions on anything, August financials? Um, if not, again, the, the biggest expenses were the roofing, the electrical, um, Lotus Treatment and then the dredging. If there's no more discussion, I would request.
We'll have to wait for Steve to.
We'll wait a second.
Please. So, uh, first insurance is our insurer for the.
Correct.
They're waiting on Lance to cut us a check.
Well, the, the way that that one was working out is the company that ran into, so we got a check for the roof because it was a storm damage during that windstorm. Um, we're working with the company, the trucking company that ran into the power line coming in. That company has since gone bankrupt, so.
Yellow, the big trucking company, that's the reason.
Yeah.
Yellow, yellow freight.
So we're working with our insurance agency and it's very slow.
Who emails said that they intend to pay out all their obligations, but they are currently being held up due to their bankruptcy filing.
Which is two thousand, yeah, under two thousand, um.
Twelve hundred.
Yeah, twelve hundred, I think it was.
So I'll make a motion to approve the reported claims as, as, uh, in, stated in the board packet.
Motion.
My second.
Section cannot permit further discussion on the claims. See none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
All right, next we have our Fund Reporting Resolution nine dash twenty-three dash oh two. This really, um, came out of the recent audit that we had for twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. And what we noticed is the way that the conservancy has historically presented their data by breaking out our general fund, checking, savings, investments, which are our CDs and then that new continuous improvement fund has kind of made it tricky to, to, to take everything out because when we utilize something in the general fund, it's that one checking account or the savings and they were viewing those as separate accounts, so it was a little bit monotonous going through this. So as we're working with that, audit came back clean, no findings on anything, but the State Board of Accounts head compliance officer recommended that we simplify that and break it into just the two funds, our general fund and the continuous conservancy improvement fund. So the way that this reads is the taxes that are raised, the continuous conservancy improvement fund, which is that set rate, that zero point three three, would go into that fund and be reported as that. All other revenue as well as the special benefits tax would be just reported as the general fund. Um, so really it's just kind of a renaming and then the cumulative maintenance fund, um, which initially was just our CDs and investments. That is kind of a defunct fund now and those funds will be classified as general fund. So it's really just in the, in a accounting bookkeeping thing to keep it a little bit cleaner and.
Prior to that, um, I thought you were finished.
No, you're good.
Prior to that, we were budgeting five thousand dollars a year in cumulative improvement and then we were throwing that money into this fund that you're speaking of. It was kind of a silly way to go, but I, I agree with what you're doing here.
Yeah, perfect. Um, so are there any other questions on that? Let's just the bookkeeping. If not, I would request a motion to approve Resolution nine dash twenty-three dash oh two.
Motion.
Go move it.
Mike has approved, Steve is second, any further discussion? See none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
All right, and lastly, on the Treasurers Report, we have the cash holdings investment discussion. Right now, we're sitting on about a million dollars in cash. We're trying to figure out how to best make some money off that. We're a little bit hesitant to lock up large sums in the CDs because we are in the middle of these projects. What is available actually is People's State Bank has just created a high-yield sweep savings account that's currently at two point nine percent. Um, there's no fees associated with that, we have one hundred percent access, one hundred percent of the time, so full liquidity. So I met with myself, Debbie and Michael and Les to go over this and what our recommendation would be, would be to convert our savings account to the high-yield sweep savings, so we're actually getting interest. Bring over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, about three-quarter of our general fund cash holdings into that and then maintain the operating budget and the general checking of about a quarter million, which is about our three-month operating budget. And then quarterly, we can just assess, if we have extra funds, we can put it into the high yield and vice versa, we can take it out. So that's our recommendation with the bulk of the general fund. Um, and then the only other CD recommendations that we did have is since we're not, we're kind of saving up money in that conservancy continuous improvement fund and as of December, once we receive our second taxes, we should have close to a hundred thousand dollars in there. We do recommend taking seventy-five thousand dollars of that money, putting it into a six-month CD. Um, maybe not People's State Bank, but the highest one that we can find. We don't have any big projects till at least next fall, potentially utilizing that. Um, so I guess I would request a motion to convert our, yes. The sweep savings currently is two point nine.
And that's our current.
Correct.
What, invest in it in other ways?
There are some, some.
Five and a half percent.
Yeah, there are. Yeah, there are. We do have to create resolutions for our main financial institutions. So it's a little like, personally, I have a high-yield savings that's only on the internet with no brick and mortar. So it's a little convoluted if you try to split through too many financial institutions. That being said, it'd be worth looking at some of the other brick and mortar ones that we have. But. Or just like the high-yield savings.
But you wouldn't have free access to it, probably.
Well, that depends on how you say it. There's, the investigation is the question, you know, if you find out that other places.
We can absolutely investigate that. I don't think there's anything that stops us right now from converting the savings to the high yield and then I'll see if somebody else around here has higher yields. So with that, I would recommend a motion to convert our People's State Bank savings account to the high-yield sweep savings account and then to transfer seventy-five thousand dollars from our conservancy continuous improvement fund into a six-month CD.
Does the CD?
At the IC insurance.
Does CD pay higher than this bank rate?
The, the C, yes, some of the six-month CDs now, I think we're pushing five plus percent. So it's nice because that money, we're not planning on utilizing that. Early to mid next year, we will have essentially drained our construction account utilizing the general funds we need to lock up.
If you saw me make the motion. I'll second. With my Malcolm second, by a Steve. Any further discussion? Seen none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. That brings us to the public hearing for the twenty-twenty-four proposed budget. What I'll do is first have Adam give the overview of the budget and then they will open up for public comments once that presentation is completed. Actually, I will first have the board ask any questions they have, then open for public comment.
So we have over the past few months going over the line item by line item budget that has been proposed and submitted to the Department of Local Government Finance. They have given their initial blessing on that budget. What we see right here, the notice to taxpayers, is how our budget is presented online through the gateway system. It's essentially our total allowed expenditures for both of our funds, the general fund and the continuous conservancy improvement fund. And then as well as the taxes for the general fund, our budget proposal is one million, six hundred and eighty-six thousand. One million of that is the sediment mitigation project. The documents of Christopher Berg. The cumulative conservancy improvement fund, we've budgeted a fifty thousand dollar expenditure. We don't actually have any plans for that. We just did that, that way we can utilize it if we need to. For the estimated funds to be raised with a tax levy with the general fund is eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If you look over in this right-hand column, that levy percentage difference is zero from last year. That's not been increased. We are requesting the same amount of money for the fund that hydraulic project continues. We have estimated the conservancy improvement tax levy at fifty-seven thousand dollars. That's actually what we got this year, so we're just use that as a safe estimate. That will change based on assessed values. Don't foresee those going down currently. So we should get at least that fifty-seven thousand, if not more. Both of those funds combined bring in nine hundred and seven thousand dollars in tax levies with the conservancy district.
Can you roll it up on the screen if it's locked? Well, it's.
So this area, the general fund budget, one million, six hundred and eighty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-two, tax levy, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That is a zero percent increase over the twenty-twenty-three requested funds. The cumulative conservancy improvement, we budgeted a fifty thousand dollar expenditure, but we don't have plans to use that currently. The estimated funds would be, Adam, hopefully a minimum fifty-seven thousand dollars. That's based on assessed values. And then that's a zero percent increase as well and that is a set rate fund of like zero.
Any questions?
So the other slide that was below the packet had the, had the tax rate and I think it's fifty-eight, point, point five eight, point five six, point, point five six. I'm trying to open it up. Took my internet a while to. And I'm, I'm just guessing that that's, that's, because our tax rate's point two eight and that's point two eight twice. Where you sent the email in the packet.
It was the separate, just the budget.
Yeah, just the budget online.
Yeah, just the budget. Accurate. Is our tax rate approximately? Point, point two eight?
I think it's higher than that.
Twenty-twenty-four proposed budget.
I'm going to pull up on.
You know what? It's not. Let me go back.
I think it is close to point five eight for that. So the actual tax rate will be decided once they get the assessed value. So last year was like right at point five eight and that's what it was based on the total assessed values to get us that eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So once they get the assessed value for this year to raise that eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we'll set the tax rate. I believe it will be similar, if not even reduced, if the assessed values have gone up. But I think you're correct, last that point five.
Yeah, it's the ordinance resolution that I think, so, my gosh, I just lost.
I think that was the combined.
Five, nine, six, six.
That's combined between the two.
Okay, yes, thank you. That's the one question I asked.
Any other questions from the board? With that, anything else that you were presenting, Adam?
No, I think with that, we will open it up to questions, comments, concerns from the public for the proposed budget hearing. If you have any, please come forward to the.
We'll officially open the public comment. Yeah. Any members of the public wishing to make comment on the budget?
Well, I got some comments to make, but. I haven't, I haven't worse than you getting out since last May. You know, I live on North Shore Drive. And I'm not here to complain about taxes. Everything I say here has to do with the budget. But I just wanted to get this off my chest. I can't see the lake from where I live and I have no access immediately access to the lake for boat mooring. What's offered to me is four miles away. How am I going to get out of it like that? The taxes, the increase this year woke me up. I pay the county about sixteen hundred dollars. That takes care of one month of my social security. And now Lake Lemon, I'm paying them over, over seventeen hundred dollars. That takes care of another month's social security. So the budget's causing me to be down to ten months, ten months social security. I just want you to know how that could affect some people like myself living around the lake. And the budget, to me, a budget means to keep the budget within what money you have to spend that year. I, I notice yours is flexible. But you try to spend at the budget or blow it instead of spending money and then raising taxes to, to pay for it, it causes hardships on a lot of people. The, the lake is really a toy if you're, if you can afford to play with it and I can't. And I'm sure there's other people like me. And I just want to get these things off my chest to keep the budget within, within reason, within what money you got coming in. And I, I urge my representative to vote no if it's, that's not the case. I just feel like I have a vote anyway. Now he knows mine. And I encourage all your directors to stay in contact with as many managers as you can and get feedback from them so we can run this lake with the people owning the property. The majority in each district running, running things. And I want, again, I asked last time I got something off my chest. I beg the board to figure out some way to let people out of this conservancy like myself. It's locked in it by the boundaries. I lived there fifty-one years and had peace and I don't, I don't have peace anymore. My, my, my property's in jeopardy from taxes from this place and it's going to influence the sellability of it. I've got a real estate lady coming to look things over for me telling me whether my property would be more sellable out of the conservancy or in it. And shit, next week I'll find that out. I thank you, Adam, for my letter. And I just want to say those things and let you know how some people are affected by this budget spending. And I understand the people that want to enjoy the lake, they want all these things done. But the people that do enjoy the lake and, and, and should pay for it, not, not some that are outside it, outside of, you know, a, a accessibility to the lake like myself. And I thank you gentlemen for giving time for someone to say things like this.
Thank you. Thank you.
First of all, thank you, Robert. You, you had your phone call, you talked or sent an email and all that. And I am going to have a meeting next May. But anyway, I just want to point out one thing that I think you said that was not correct. And that was that we spend money and then go raise taxes to cover it. It has to be, because we're a government entity, correct me if I'm wrong, we have to do a budget this year that sets up for next year and that's the only way we can save. We can't spend the money ahead of time. It has to be after we've got it. So, and we went through and months of wrangling, it was a couple of years ago now, about raising the taxes. Can we get, can we do this? People scream and people, some people did scream and all that, but so that, that already happened.
Well, it took the budget that Adam had on screaming and okay, you know what the budget you're asking for, but surely you know how much money you have to spend for that budget, right?
That's what we're talking about right now is how much money will we bring in next year?
If you're, if you're spending more than, than's available to spend without raising taxes, I'm, I'm, I'm against that. That's what I said, I'm telling my reps. I would vote no for that. And I'm only one vote, but that's, that's my opinion.
Okay, thank you. I, thank you guys.
I just have, I just have a quick question. So if the current tax levy is going to be nine hundred and seven thousand, right?
The current tax levy is eight hundred and fifty thousand.
But the one you're requesting for next year? What you think you're going to get? Column five.
So yes, that's between the special benefits tax and the continuous.
That's the tunnel you're expecting to get.
Correct.
But you're saying over here into your budget, what your money, how much money you need is one point seven billion.
That's our expenditures, yes.
So how are you covering that seven hundred, over seven hundred thousand dollars?
With our current cash holdings that we have now of a million dollars.
I, I think, I, I think what Mr. Steele's trying to say is, and I do, I do know where you're coming from. When you guys, you, you use the word budget, it's not, there's different. He's trying to say if you have a certain amount of income, you have to live within your means and you have to be, you know, buy, buy a budget. What you guys do is just ask for what you want, but your, what they're doing is budgeting how they're going to spend the money. So there's kind of a little bit of a difference between how the word budget is being used.
We also budget for what we are requesting and proposing that the taxes will be.
Right, right.
So, and we're looking at our cash reserves as well and considering the overall insurance.
He's, he's saying that you're not living within, within any budget. You're not trying to stay within any dollar amounts anywhere. You're just, this is how much we want and ask for it.
In that part, because in previous years, you withheld some cash knowing that there's going to be some expenses coming up.
You effectively have ready-made funds or cash reserves.
Yeah.
Had them separately. Correct. We want to utilize this cash. We don't want the appearance that we're elevating tax on a basis and then just getting those funds and not utilizing. So the money that we have raised, we are planning to use.
And realistically, nothing has changed over many years, except that we added a major hydraulic dredging. And that was, I would consider a necessity. That's where the million dollars goes and the bond goes and.
Correct, it was pretty flat until we.
It would look like it didn't five years ago.
Any other people wishing to comment on the budget?
I have a couple of questions. And I don't have the, regarding the cumulative improvement fund. When the budget was presented, there was a sheet there that showed actuals from spring and fall and so forth. And those numbers were different. I'm just wondering why they're different between spring and fall.
We get the, sorry, we get the bulk of our taxes during that spring settlement. So we'll get over fifty percent during that spring settlement in June and then we get the remainder of the settlement in December. So it's never split fifty-fifty between that spring and fall settlement.
I think it's your open funds.
Ryan, it's just kind of, so we request it and then the county auditors write it and it's just always kind of been front-loaded.
When your tax bill is the same amount, right, spring and fall?
Yes.
She gives a different amount spring.
Correct. And I'm not, that's what, that's how they, I don't know if it's based on the year before. I think it's that kind of, you know, twenty-twenty-two pay twenty-twenty-three type thing. But yeah, we do get more in the spring settlement.
And in the fundraising presentation, one of the pie charts there was a breakout between revenue from fees and expenses versus taxes. And it sounded like you were saying that a, a goal of the district is to kind of a fifty-fifty split between those. Is that?
That was the ideal breakdown of revenue from the freeholders during that certain.
It's not necessarily the goal of the district. That's the feedback that we receive from.
Got you, got you. Okay. So got to tag it onto that. The fees, fees, fee revenue, besides grants and donations, special events and stuff that, that are hard to determine a source for, do you have the ability to distinguish between freeholders and visitors? Things like wireback permits, launch fees, wakeboard fee, reading club fees that suddenly seem like. Those are the, those are the items that mostly pertain to freeholders. Can you, you have really to break those out? Do you know where they come from?
I actually had Ross broke these out from our fees and charges based on a request last time to look at the freeholder versus non-freeholder breakdown. These do not include any of the taxes, but they do include one hundred percent of our fees and charges that are on that fees and charts of group sheet, sublease, boat passes, all that kind of stuff. So we actually did break this out, out of resident and non-resident. We tried to break this out, out of resident and non-resident.
Which is which color was?
Green is red.
Green is resident and the blue is non-resident. So when we take out the taxes, and again, that gets back to your fifty-fifty split, et cetera. When we take out the taxes out of our total fee revenue, three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, which we're projecting in, well, I think it's to date.
Well, this was, yeah, as of, I don't know, last week basically. So there will be, it will maybe move a percentage point because we're still getting some daily votes, but most of all of our fees for the year have been collected.
So of that, sixty-five point three percent is non-freeholder of just the fees and then thirty-four point essentially seven percent. And then thirty-four point essentially seven percent would be the proportion of fees and charges raised from residents. And that resident rate may actually be a little bit higher because the way we're set up with the city of Bloomington Utilities is that Bloomington Utilities ratepayers can actually get freeholder cost on that. So this doesn't account for the taxes, but when we look at just the fees and charges themselves that we will approve via resolution at the next meeting.
Is that, is that, well, I can get it from.
Yeah, we've got, and we can, we can email it to you as well if you'd like that.
Okay, thank you.
So marina and club fees, is that money that comes from the marina?
Yes, that is the marina and the Bloomington Yacht Club. And that is their annual marina fee. And then it is the slip fees that they pay. I'm sure it's a hundred dollars and change. So they pay us for each slip out there rent out.
So if I go to the marina and pay for my sticker, it's not in that?
No, it's in the boat passes.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, that's just, I figured, I mean, I might be.
No, I, I was gonna say.
I assume that people that live on the lake aren't keeping their boat at the marina.
But they are going to the marina and buying a boat pass.
But that's, that's in the passes. So that's not in that marina.
Just, I'm just trying to.
Yep.
Yeah. And we do track that out. So we have, when I issue them passes before we sign off, and I close them out every so often. So I believe they've sold like fifty-six thousand dollars so far of fees for the passes through the marina.
Do we consider Nob Hill residents freeholders?
They are not. They're north of the North Shore boundary, so they are outside of the district.
Thank you.
But that being said, I feel like a lot of the Nob Hill keep their boats at the marina.
They do.
And we do get the slip fees. So each slip that's rented out, we do get over a hundred dollars.
They pay a rent fee, put their boat in.
Yeah. So we do capture that from the slips. And then again, that is in our fees and charges resolution. That will be at the next board meeting and then kind of codified in our.
This will be at the next board meeting?
Yeah, we'll go a little bit more depth at the, at the next.
I'd like that.
Yeah, we'll have our fees and charges resolution then, so.
See, it's, it's things like this that if we were to tie in with someone. I'm gonna tell you, I've been, I've been writing grants for, I've been on the fire department thirty-eight years. I've been writing grants, safer grants, apparatus grants, air fact grants, been very successful. And it's things like this that, that get you the money. This is what gets you the money right here. This is the breakdown of how. And, uh, and I had called FEMA, I've called the Army Corps of Engineers. There's no grants available out there. There just aren't any. Unless we tie into somebody that people are willing to give to. They'll give to the fire department because fire departments are poor. Wait, what you got here?
Any other members of the public wishing to comment?
I just wanted a good, quick, quick note because people aren't aware of this. It's just a little note. I have houses, I've had houses and still have a house in Brown County. And I have houses in the rope. My, one of my houses in Brown County now is a, across from you, it's great. But the assessment of Brown County houses is so much lower. I have a pretty little cabin. And it's assessed double what my three-bedroom house, nice house is. So the people in Brown County, they don't have as good a lake value, but I'm just, want them to know that we are paying so, so much money in property taxes. Mine are like six thousand. We are, I'm not. So now that I'm a millionaire row, it got me in that just, so I just wanted to know that maybe, maybe Brown County people think about that.
Sarah, I'm in Brown County and my taxes.
Well, your houses.
I, I don't know what you're, where you're getting, getting at.
Well, my Chitwood house was really, really.
But you don't own that Chitwood house.
No, it was. And my, my house.
You know what that Chitwood house is going to pay next year?
They bought it. But my house and my house on, uh, North Shore Drive is not in the lake. It's, it's six hundred a year. It's the same size as my house paying.
I just, I think, I don't think that you're given an accurate information of.
Maybe they've bought up now, but they've been, they've been a lot lower.
People that bought that Chitwood house, uh, will be in ten or twelve thousand dollars in taxes next year.
That's good. Somebody maybe done made corrections in the tax.
Oh, I'm watching.
Yeah. I'm still at six hundred on this three-bedroom house. Six hundred a year in taxes from this one-bedroom house is four thousand.
Any other members of the public wishing to comment during the public hearing section? If not, I will close the public hearing at seven eighteen P M. Continuing on the agenda, we did have a request from Mike Blackwell to have a dredging discussion regarding Zone One, District Seven. And Mike, I'll let you do the introduction and Carol's coming up.
Uh, yeah, I'd like to introduce Carol Gentry. Uh, she is my neighbor on Solomon Harbor Road. And, uh, uh, this is kind of, uh, in addition to the, uh, request at the June, uh, summer meeting. Uh, when I asked the board if we could use your disposal sites, uh, and use the hydraulic dredging, we were willing to pay for hydraulic dredging in our area. Uh, and Carol is heading up this, uh, this program and, uh, she's got some handouts.
I'll share these as well, Carol.
Yeah, sure.
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
And, and I will note, um, I, I do view this as an informational discussion item of not anticipating taking any action tonight. It's for us to be seen.
That's fine. Yeah, thank you.
There are two maps that I'll be referring to. This is a zone map and this is an engineering study from two thousand.
Appreciate you having her do the agenda. She's met with Adam, I don't know how many times.
I want to thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. And I especially want to thank Adam for the time he spent with me. He's come to my, um, our Ellis Point twice already. He's pulled documents for me, emailed me things. Um, he helped find everything that I'm going to say tonight. Basically, his education on what is going on has been rather invaluable. Um, to begin with, if I may, I want to give you a brief, very brief history of Salmon Harbor HOA. I feel like we are one of the few on this lake. We were formed informally in two thousand and twelve with the goal of basically just maintaining boating through a very tiny channel that goes way back and terminates on, on South Shore Road. Um, we collected money to build our own weir system. We have, um, a treasurer who's here, Ann. Um, she still is our treasurer. We collect money every few years to maintain our own weir system. And we have periodically in two thousand and twelve and in two thousand and eighteen, collected money from all our neighbors to dredge ourselves. So we feel like we're trying to be good partners with the lake. So in the June meeting, when you guys agreed to let us pay to have Heartland while they were there, dredge us all, you know, dredge us out. I went to all of my neighbors, of whom there are thirteen, there are seventeen in the neighborhood, but four families live on the other side. So they're not quite as interested. Um, so there are thirteen families involved from the tip of Ellis Point all the way back into the corner. And one of the most common questions I was asked was, where will the dredging begin? How far back will it get? Like, what are we getting for our money? And then how long would it last? What will it cover and how long will it last? And, um, so Adam and I met and we were all originally very surprised to see that Zone One does not come down at all below the tip of Ellis Point. It goes through the middle of the creek and nothing to the south of the creek. Between the blue Lotus Maintenance Line, all the way over to the peninsula was ever included in this zone. If you would look up in Zone Five, and I've given you a paper copy, the Zone Five map actually follows the shoreline and dredges from Lotus Maintenance Line to the forty-foot dock parameter that's established in the resolution. Same with Zone Four. It goes around Point Adeline, circles around the Lotus Maintenance Line on that. And then actually picks up a little bit in the northwest corner of Re Point. Those zones follow the shoreline and down in Zone One, we have a straight line and nothing came below the creek. So I asked Adam, where did the zone map come from? And he's like, okay, I'll pull those documents for you. The second document that I, you have in front of you then is an engineering study from two thousand and six. And these zones were created based on this engineering study. Everything was given a number. And it was numbered either dock access, channel, or boating safety. And the boating safeties are typically, other than the blue, the lighter white. If you go down to the area that we are considering down there, we didn't get a number. It's like this engineering study just sort of forgot about that triangle down there. So the one thirty-nine is referring to the other side of Ellis Point. The backside of Ellis Point got no number. It's colored the same as all the other boating safety areas of the lake. But in my opinion, and Adam couldn't really, we talked about it, we don't really know why that area didn't get a number. But because it didn't, it didn't get incorporated into Zone One. So Zone One is a nice straight line and it doesn't look like Zone Five or Zone Four. So that is, that is my main point. So we are committed to paying back along this channel. But that front triangle from the creek down to Ellis Point and to the area right there where he's circling. We feel like that's still part of the lake. There are no docks in that area. When you come out of the channel, you're basically entering the lake, but it's south of that Zone One dredge line. Yeah. And feel free to tell me if I can miss.
No, no, I've been accurate.
So that is the first point I wanted to point out to you. I gave you paper maps so that you could take them home and look at them. Because to, um, Michael's point, we probably, especially if only for you, we aren't going to get any kind of permanent resolution tonight. But I really wanted to bring this issue forward. My second request is for you to consider how you're going to ke- keep the northern edge of that Zone One line back to the Lotus Maintenance Line clean. They could not get all the way to that blue line in the bottom corner of Zone One. There's a berm that sticks out there that Heartland was not able to get. The reason that we are concerned about that is it is hard dirt and it will force all sedimentation that comes down the creek south into the Salmon Harbor jump. So it can't be done hydraulically. So we would like the board go.
I think it can be done hydraulically, but not with the, uh, with the auger head, uh, the, what you call it, head, type of.
Yeah, it's like the, the cutter head type.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, essentially it got to the point when we bid all this out, that was still underwater by inches. But now it has become vegetated. So the conditions were different than when we initially started looking at this in twenty twenty. Um, when they got to this area, it was just going so slow. They said, these are not the conditions that were bid on. And I think we're about probably two hundred feet from the Lotus Maintenance Line on that finger there. Um, they said without kind of doing some type of change order on the contract to increase costs. Like, we just can't sit here and chew through this and lose money.
Doesn't hurt on talking about getting a cutter ball.
Yes.
In which case they did, could do it. But yeah, I'm just throwing that out.
It wouldn't be this year.
Wouldn't be this year.
So next year, if I could just, uh, next year, we rebid there.
Correct, yes. We'll have to rebid any hydraulic dredging.
And then that would, and then that rebid then could, could bring a, a cutter ball.
We could, we could include that section that was missed in that rebid, I agree.
Sorry, Carol.
Well, that's fine. Because it's basically, when I'm talking to my neighbors, and just to let you know, we have raised close to twenty thousand dollars from thirteen families. If we could get that done, and then we would personally take over and do the rest. As a side note, it would be very helpful to the Hengel family because they have dry land now on all four sides of their home. And they're the family that has had to put up with the most nuisance because of the noise. That's the family that has the boostle pump.
She spoke in March.
In their front yard. So we'd also, you know, we'd, I feel like we would become like really good partners with everybody if we could come to some sort of resolution on this. And then the other thing that had us very concerned was that berm of land. Because if we're going to put twenty thousand dollars of our own money into this, we need it to last. We can't do this every other year. We need, we need a few years of. So that's why I wanted to bring that.
I would like to say too, when I met with Carol, we kind of talked about the raw topics of plan to protect that code east of Ellis Point there. Um, initially during some of the discussions, we're talking about cutting this southern finger of land all the way back to the Lotus. Kind of talk about the impacts of that sedimentation. And during the last one, um, Carol was really receptive to maintain a good portion of that land and actually letting it vegetate. That way you're going to create, instead of having complete open water right at the end of the creek, you'd have kind of a protective barrier on that southern side to promote that sediment water flow to the west.
Other side is north side, south side, west side?
South side.
The south side of the creek, right here.
If we, if we get this triangle classified as lake, we would then pick up our dredging kind of where that pink line is, and we would leave a little berm of land right there on the south side to sort of encourage sedimentation to go back into Zone One and Two. No one lives in One and Two, humans.
No, we do need a, we need a diverter.
Yes. So, so right now, the diverter is on the north side and it's diverting towards us. What we would do is Adam would help delineate. And we, he and I have discussed it vaguely in terms of this orange marker to that dead Lotus, you know. But leaving a finger of land on the south side to divert this, but the, the dry land on the north side has us very worried about putting our money in before that's addressed.
Nice thing about that southern thing is there will be no cost. The conservancy, mother nature's.
Mother nature's going to fix that. Yes. So anyway, thank you for allowing me to present this to you, um, representing our HOA.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
Mr. Steve?
Yeah. This is a unique situation.
It is very unique. I can't say if it's the only, it's very unique because it is right at the mouth of Bean Blossom Creek. So they are in that direct impact deposition zone there. So I would say it's unique in that aspect. I did not have an answer why there was not a zone there initially. Um, I do think some of the information that we would need is looking at the exact area that would like to be added on to be dredged on that south berm of the creek channel and looking at the yardage amount there. So we could see how much is actually there and kind of guess at how long it would take.
I would say the reason there's no zone there is because the numbers were originally put on here just so we had a way of talking about things. And we weren't, we were just looking at how we were going to do along the weed line. So I asked, can you put some numbers on there? So I, over a phone call, I can say, you know, three there on the map. And nobody ever thought to put anything down there. Wasn't part of the original.
This is developed during the strategic planning committee here and stuff. So I think that would be the kind of information, something, how big the area is, how much sediments there.
Yeah, I, I think I would be interested in, you know, that exact information. Obviously, we can put estimated costs based on our, our current bid going a little bit higher because we know the next one's not going to be as cheap. Two, I think we need to do an assessment, at least based on, on the priorities established within the from the strategic, uh, planning committee to look at, you know, is, is there any other in the areas that we're most likely going to be focusing on within the next three to five years, um, that are similar situations, you know? There was a lot of thought put into, to the process, obviously, but it's also possible that there were oversights. So I want to make sure we're not reopening Pandora's box on the priorities of the conservancy district. But if there's a good justification as to it was an oversight and it should have been included, then I think it's appropriate to look at that information.
Maybe, should we put it to T? Should we say this will resolve?
I can work with, I can work with Carol, um, to get that type of information and then I would say that's.
If the board is asked to take any action, I would certainly want something in the board packet that identifies.
Well, absolutely. Uh, I guess my question would be, can small barge, you and Ross and small barge kind of eliminate a little bit of that dry land? And, and not this year, next year.
I mean, you know, I mean, honestly, if we look at the yardage, I would want to see the cost comparison of how the hydraulic guys do it now versus our time and then renting the off-road truck. It may come out where it's cheaper just to hydrologically dredge it.
Okay.
Than, than for us to rent the truck and time.
So they, they, they said they couldn't do it and now they might be able to do it or was we talking about it? Digging underneath it and then letting it fall.
So one on the north side?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I would, I would look at that and just.
Okay. Okay.
Kind of see. I don't, I don't wanna commit right now.
It's just an idea.
Yeah.
And so, and I appreciate the fact that you're gonna meet with Carol again and, and, uh, and maybe add it to the packet next, next time, so. Which would be a busy, it's gonna be a busy month. October's a busy month. Thank you.
And then for managers report, I put out a video today.
I'm sorry, I skipped you.
Oh, no, you're all right. I can say it myself. I put out a, decided a video update today that got emailed out this morning. I'm kind of talking about Little Red, twenty twenty-four, kind of moving forward, so feel free to check that out.
How many total K B cards? Do you have that figured?
About one fifteen is all.
Nice, nice. So we are five thousand short of our goal.
Yeah, and then we're, we're eligible with that contract extension to go upwards of one forty. And actually, I talked a little bit in that video that that sediment is settling out so late, it's actually land above the waterline, so we may be able to fit over one twenty upwards.
Any questions for the managers? Item nine, the business corresponds with future agendas, uh, the next board meeting is Thursday, August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, which includes the adoption of twenty twenty-four's budgets. With that, I will entertain motion for adjournment.
I have moved to adjournments.
We have a second.
Second.
And third. I can't have objection, we stand adjourned.
So you can mechanically, you can.